Welcome to December 3, 2024, City Council Meeting, 6:30 in the chambers. We'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directional, which will lead our state to be strong and unified. May we continue in the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which would be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join in salute and flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem. Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
I'm present.
Motion to silence. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Nancy A. Kavanaugh, beloved wife of John M. Kavanaugh, with whom she shared 61 years of marriage. Nancy was born and raised in Lowell and graduated from Chemsford High School in 1957, where she was a baton twirler. After high school, she spent time as a model for Lemkin's Clothing Store. During this time, she met the love of her life. She and John married in 1963 and started their family. After she was married, she held various administrative positions while raising her three girls. Her last position before retirement was with Raytheon Missile System in Bedford, where she worked as an executive secretary for 20 years. In addition to raising her daughters and working, she cared for her mother, who lived with her for 24 years. Nancy's passion was her family. She was never happier when the family was all together. In addition to her husband, Nancy leaves her three daughters, Kelly St. Seer and her husband, Paul, the commissioner of our DPW office in Lowell; Lisa McDonald of Chemsford; and Erin Sexton and her husband, Kevin. She leaves her seven grandchildren, Paul St. Seer, Luke St. Seer, Lydia St. Seer, Sarah McDonald, Ethan McDonald, Madison Sexton, and John Sexton. We offer our sympathy to her family, relatives, and many friends, especially Sue and Bonnie. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to all the people who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any others? Mr. Clark, please hit the lights. May they rest in peace.
Moving on to Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication for Remote Zoom Participation. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Robinson, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, Mayor's Housing Subcommittee, November 26th, City Council Regular Meeting, November 26th, for acceptance. The motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Mercier, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 4, City Council Motions.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss the closure of Mill Number 5.
Motion by Counselor Belanger.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mercier, suspend the rules, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Counselor Belanger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, by now, we've all heard the, we all heard, and we are devastated by the news to hear that Mill Number 5 will be closing. Apparently, it's a financial decision that's been made by the property owner, which the city really has little to no control over. But we do have some control over what we can do moving forward. So the spirit of suspending the rules is to communicate and acknowledge this to the public, to the numerous emails we've got from residents in the city and on the outlining communities still, several emails and calls from members from Tingsborough, Chemsford, whatever it may be. And that's a good thing, that this was, Mill Number 5 was a great destination. It's going to be sadly missed, its current location. But what we can do is put focus on this, and hopefully, we can find a cooperative space where they can all still continue to do business. This, you know, will not be easy. There are several small businesses in there. Through the nature of the businesses, Mill Number 5 was open Thursday to Sunday, you know, nights and weekends. So these aren't full-time operational small businesses. So individually, to them, to have a storefront will probably not be feasible. So I'm thinking, you know, we need to find a, all, one inclusive location, all under one roof, for all these businesses to relocate, hopefully, and obviously, in the downtown. I think it's very important, and I know my colleagues are going to have a lot to say as well. So, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. To manager, I know you've, this is not sitting well with you either. I'm just wondering how, what conversation's going with the, any of the businesses, the property owner? Have we made any headway?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counselor, you are correct. Thank you very much, acknowledging the fact that this was a private transaction. There's not much we can do about it, but we can be helpful. DPD has already scheduled discussion. I was up on, I was up there actually Saturday, talked to a couple of the business owners that I know. I do believe wholeheartedly that the business owners that I spoke with, that I've known for a number of years, they know the city is doing everything they can. We will continue to do everything we can. As many of the councilors know, we have opened up, we have done something kind of, I don't want to say unique, but something that has not happened here in the city before, Project Pop-Up, which DPD has spearheaded with a number of small businesses in the downtown. Your points are well taken, Counselor. There are some businesses that won't be able to function just as a single storefront. But we're looking at how we've attacked the Project Pop-Up piece, where we're giving people an opportunity. I'm not really at liberty to say what the number of folks that I have called, excuse me, that have called me and have called them, that are willing to help, that have places, we're hoping for some type of soft landing. We're also hoping to speak with the new owner, which we're very happy with the new owner. They've done great things here for the city. The, the school has done wonderful things. But we, we're looking at this as, as an opportunity, not, it's a minor setback, but this is going to be an opportunity for us to look and see how we can assist small businesses as we have been. We will be talking about this as a, as a whole, as a body, soon, I would think. And I'm sad that it's happening, but I see opportunity here for some of these businesses. And I, you know, I've talked to every councilor here, I've heard the same discussion and the same concern about ensuring that the quality of those businesses continue to remain in Lowell, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that happens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. As a former downtown small businessman, you know, this location was not only near and dear to me, but my colleagues too. I'm sure they're going to have a lot of input and questions tonight. But, so please, Mr. Manager, I know you're very much on top of this, I can see. So please, and to Ms. Baez of Planning and Development, thank you for being on top of this. And please, continue to put your best foot forward on this, so let's find a home for all these businesses that sit under this roof. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I also, I thank my colleague for suspending the rules on this. I'd like to make a motion, if that's proper. I don't know when we can do it, when it's allowed. But I think this situation here warrants going into executive session for a full conversation in regards to the city stepping up with relocation efforts, because any relocation efforts could potentially involve utilizing public funds in the negotiation process. And I think that could hinder any negotiations if need be, if the city's going to step up and assist these small businesses with a relocation, if that's proper.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. We have looked at that, we can continue to look at that. And given the fact that it could possibly be finance-related, is, is, if it's the wish of the council, if we can move forward into an executive session at some point in the next week or two, I think that that would be appropriate, given the fact that we'd be talking about real estate transaction and anything at this time, public. We're unsure of, of who the potential people out there that could assist us financially. What can the city help? How can we help? I just want to make sure that, from the city solicitor, I think that this is something we could do in the coming, in the coming weeks, if that's not in any type of violation, given the fact that it could be us financially helping or...
Negotiating a success or agreement for relocation.
Assistant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if the reason to enter executive session is to negotiate a lease, that's, you know, sort of the crux of what is going to be discussed, and those negotiations around a transaction like that, that would be an appropriate reason to enter executive session.
Thank you. So my motion would be to have the manager and the administration come back to the council if, if my colleagues are in agreement with this, and set a date for an executive session focused around any potential relocation efforts coming from the city.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Belanger. Hold on, yeah. We got Counselor Janess first, then Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention, for anybody who might be watching, I've had conversations with some of the folks over at the mill. The biggest thing that they want stressed is that the businesses are still open and will be open through the end of January. So if you have your holiday shopping you want to do at the mill, if you want to support these businesses, if you want to help them move forward into whatever the next phase may be, the best thing you can do is go down to the mill when they're open and shop and help support those businesses. They're all still open. It is the holiday shopping season, I think it's important to note that. So you have till the end of January to get down there. There's events every weekend, it's a great place to go spend some time, spend some money, and buy local gifts for the holiday season, so I'd encourage everybody to do that. And, Mr. Manager, I know we've talked several times on this, and I appreciate the efforts that you and your team are putting in to figure out what's next for this situation. I know we've talked about a couple potential spots that might be, might be an opportunity to potentially recreate a similar experience going forward. I think it is important to have something like this in the city that allows for retail on this kind of scale, right? Not businesses that are open seven days a week, or even five days a week. But to give entrepreneurs an opportunity to start a business, there's several businesses in the city now that are open full-time, that started in Mill Number 5, and have grown up and moved out. And so having that kind of incubator space is really an important part of our economic development strategy. And I know you guys understand that, and I know your team's working on this. So I look forward to hearing what's next, but don't be shy about going to the mill and supporting the businesses that are there, is, is the message I'd like to relay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, when I learned of the new, it was heartbroken. It's not one business that we going to lose. It's a group of businesses that've been together for a long, long time. I agree with the managers to some extent that it's an opportunity to find them a new home. I think it's two months, you know, is there a possibility at all to get that somewhat extension? Is the charter school going to move their renovation that quick? Is there a possibility of extensions to say maybe a year or so to allow some, and if not all, these businesses to identify or relocate themselves somewhere with the help of the city?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I've talked to those folks, they have a board of directors, they want to try to be as helpful as possible, but it hasn't been exactly expressed, can it be, you know, another month, another two months? And that, none of that is true at this time. So currently, right now, the plan is the closure at the end of January, but we are still actively pursuing this to try to talk to the board of directors. But once again, they've done a fabulous job. The gentleman that previously owned it has done a great job. Would like a little bit more time, we're going to ask for it, and we're going to see if we can get there. So that's all in full-fledged discussions.
That said, I see a possibility here that maybe the board of trustee for the charter school will extend somewhat time for businesses to identify with our help, relocate them to another area, and also maybe as well in the future, identify locations where we can have this kind of Mill Number 5, you know, born somewhere out in the city. So, you know, and, and I, it happened, you know, like a month before Christmas. I do agree with Counselor Janess that, you know, let's get out there, people in the community, some of the member of this council, going, you know, buy some gift there, just to help them. And maybe going forward with the DPD assistant, you know, to help relocate them a new home. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be crystal clear that the, the school has been very receptive to, to a discussion. And I do know that they've been meeting individually with the businesses as well, back and forth. So, Counselor, exactly what you're, what you're talking about is actively happening. I just can't, I'm not in a position to say, oh, don't worry, it's going to be open till another date. But I know that, you know, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of positive excitement, given, you know, the excitement for the school, and, but I think they're being, they're going to be as very, as helpful as they can be with their plans to move forward, and so will the city. So I wish I could say to you, let's not worry for another X amount of months, but I can tell you that the school, the administration, the board is, you know, they're excited for their new opportunity, but yet they're very cognizant of what is happening, and they've been talking to folks over there. And once again, given the opportunity on Saturday, I did have a great chance to talk to quite a few of the owners that I happen to know. And they, they understood, and they're, you know, they're sad, but, you know, we, I told them, we'll help, we're going to get their back, and we'll, we'll, we'll figure this out. I am truly looking at this as a, as an opportunity to continue to help. It may not be the perfect spot at the time, but there's other things that I think we really need to be looking at. And I'm excited to, to, to take this on, and DPD, I know, is meeting with a few folks tomorrow, they're pushing out information. So this is kind of one of those work in progresses that I feel, you know, I feel confident about. It's going to be a challenge, it's going to be hard, but I know with this council's support, we'll get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session if need be. It was made and seconded. All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes.
4.1, Counselor Getchea, request city manager update the city council on plans to deal with the governor's changes to the state emergency assistance family shelter system that will include phasing out of the emergency use of hotels and motels in communities around the Commonwealth. Seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I, I think this piece is important to our city, where we have a hotel currently that has migrant families in it, and they're going to be basically sending them, looking for housing. And right now, currently, we have heard over and over and over again about housing shortages in our city. Currently, we have 205 families in there, and when you divide it by the number of people at over 600, you got 3.5, they apply, over three people per family over there. And the state has come out with a model, a shelter model, it said, beginning, beginning on December 10th, families will be assessed according to their risk and need, and directed to either the system's rapid shelter track or the bridge shelter track. Pending legislation approval, stays in the rapid shelter track are expected to conclude in 30 days, while stays in the bridge shelter track are expected to conclude in six months. I don't know where we're going to find all this property for everyone to just go to. And what that will do is drive the rents even further in another direction, one way or the other. Yes, the state comes in and says, look, we're going to give you more money to offset the cost of the rentals. So what about the people who don't get that upgrade in the cost, from, you know, 15,000, I think it was, 15,000 over a two-year period, to 50,000 over a two-year period, to people who are moving? Mr. Manager, this is something we have to get control of right away and speak to the state, and, if you haven't already. Because when you're looking at this, we all know that there's lease over at the ICC of one year with one-year options on it. When is that going to close out? Are they going to accept those one-year options, or are they not? So there's, there's a lot of information this body needs at this point, because as we walk through every single planning board, everything we talk about is, oh, we need more affordable housing. We have master plans out there spelling these things, but it's not something that you drop a pill in, and 30 days later, or six months later, we have these type of, this room, 205 apartments in the city of Lowell that are going to be affordable for people, or even in our Merrimack Valley. So I think, again, you know, it's poor planning on the state again. And they even say it in their thing, the assistant governor, the lieutenant governor, I heard clearly consensus around making shelter brief, rare, and non-kept spaces. And basically, what they're saying in their article is that in recent years, the state's family shelter system has grown to be increasingly unsustainable. I would think you knew that going in, it was going to be at this point. And here we are, a city who's struggling to make ends meet and everything, and now we're going to be holding. And what will happen to the ICC once it's vacated? Is that something that, you know, goes back to UMass Lowell? Is the state going to take it? Are they going to offer it to the city? You know, because right now, I'm sure it needs work after, you know, that, or change in its environment within, whichever way you want to look at it. I think it's something we really need to get a clear path on from the state. Is their funding coming this way to help when they just release people back in? What is their plan? This is not really a plan to me, saying, look, and once we get you designated, and it's not up to the families, families will not be able to choose between the tracks, whether it's rapid, the 30-day, or the, the shelter model, or the bridge model, I'm sorry. When you look at those two tracks, they're totally different. One is 30 days, one is six months, and then you're basically, where do you go? And that, and they say they're going to have resources, but I would love to see how their resources, they're going to put them somewhere where we don't have the resources to give. We have many families on a waiting list at the Lowell Housing Authority. That list is as long as anybody's arms in here, plus all of us put together, and so that's the challenge. I'm just wondering what the direction is, and I'm asking you to reach out to the state and say, okay, could you come back to us with an outline of what their plans actually are? Could we have that discussion at this body, and how we're going to move forward with that? Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. And not to answer this right now, we have been having these discussions, I just want to make that clear. We've talked to Lieutenant Governor quite a bit about this particular piece. Everyone knows that the ICC will be utilized for the next year, that's been widely shared. So it'll be over, you know, that'll be the full two years that they were looking for. Today, we had the opportunity to meet with the entire State House delegation, as well as Congresswoman Trahan's office, and have this discussion. We're talking about not only the ICC, but also individual homelessness that we're experiencing. Very fortunate to have one of, one of our folks from the Executive Office of Livable Communities come in and talk about this as well, on individual homelessness. So there are a lot of things that were kicked around, I shouldn't say kicked around, there are a lot of ideas that we'll continue to be talking to, talking these folks about. And I'm hoping that the delegation is, is in agreement, that they'll be asking, once again, the secretary to go through the protocol, to say, we need some immediate help. I've got the indication from the entire delegation that they would do that. Congresswoman's office, once again, helpful as well. The folks from the state that were there today, they want to be helpful for the short term. And we shared numbers, it was, it was a very good meeting. Once again, I don't want to answer that right now, but I think that we will get something back with the Lieutenant Governor. There hasn't been a, there's been a lot of discussions about how to, how to solve this problem, and we're, we're continuing to move forward with it.
Would you happen to know when the last time a new family was put in there? Was it yesterday, the week before, has it been very recent? And as they reduce the number, as they start coming into the community in a sustainable, are we backfilling the, the rooms? I guess that's the question.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. We have not heard of any backfilling, but then again, we haven't heard of a lot of people leaving either. So it's a fluid number. I do know that some people have left because they've found work, they've found housing. What we've found out, that quite frankly, the ICC, which this council, I believe, was very helpful with, and I've made that crystal clear to the Lieutenant Governor, we understand that we need to help people. We've been here to help, to ensure that folks had a place to stay. I think that that says a lot about our city. And quite honestly, there hasn't been a lot of problems. There's been some, and I'll, I'll put them in the silly category, silly problems, which we've had, our fire department's done a great job, a couple of serious problems that our police department had to explain some of the rules. But overall, it's been very, very good. However, the backfilling, we haven't heard that, we still have our meetings and our discussions, but I will find out if there's, if there's any plan to backfill, or what the, the, the negative growth, I guess, away per the, per your motion. I'll, I'll try to figure that out and see if they can help me with that.
My thought process is not, is anybody doing any, you know, thing wrong in the city or anything like that? It's, my thought process is if these rooms are now flooding in and looking for housing in the city and we don't have it, someone's being displaced. And that, and how are we backfilling in those places? We don't have, we're already saturated from what everything is on our master plan, to everything that we do around here, that's what we say, is we need more affordable housing. And when everybody calls me, they always ask the same question, how do I get into the Housing Authority? And that list is huge, so if you could get back to us, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I think this is a great motion, and I think just the conversation brought up something that also, I think, requires a little bit of thought. And I know there was discussions, there are groups within the community, I know Middlesex Community College had, had mentioned, and amongst other groups, once the ICC is no longer being utilized in this capacity, I think it's important to start those conversations too, to see what direction does it go. I know there was initially conversations around, is that something Middlesex Community College would be interested in utilizing for additional classroom space and other things like that? Hotel, again, again, I think there are some groups in the community that are willing to have those conversations, so I hope that they'll be brought in for that conversation process too. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my ears perked up a little bit with Counselor Getchea asked about extensions here. This was a one-year with a one-year, or a two-year, one-year? So we are 12 months away from...
From February.
February of the following, okay, understood. All right, I just wanted to make sure we're, that, that's what we were looking at for years. All right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, Counselor Scott, go.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. So I guess, I guess the question that comes to my mind is on long-term funds. What long-term funds are we going to see as a city to sustain the housing? Long-term funding are we going to, to see to sustain this afterwards? I mean, I guess that's the big question. We've been a welcoming city, we've had no issues, we want everything to work out, you know, but as Counselor Getchea said, there's no housing, it's a housing crisis. Where are they going to go afterwards? And it can't be on the backs of the poorest residents in the city to have to sustain this cost. It's not fair, so it has to be something taken up at the state and federal level. So I guess that's just my question. What, what funding are we going to see? Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion, sorry, Counselor Noon, do you want to say something? Oh, sorry. Motion passes 4.2, Counselors Robinson and Getchea, request city manager work at the Elliot Church to explore installation of a fence similar to the Lowell Judicial Center to assist with them, assist with them with safeguarding their property, no second needed. Do you have a ready speaker, Mr. Clark?
Charles Art.
Mr. Art, you with us?
Can you hear us? Charles Art. You're going to have to unmute.
You're on mute, sir. I'm sorry. Answers 4.2, Counselors Robinson and Getchea, request city manager work at the Elliot Church to explore installation of a fence similar to the Lowell... explore installation of a fence similar to Lowell Judicial Center to assist with them with safeguarding their property, no second needed. Do you have a registered speaker, Mr. Clark?
Charles Ott. Yes, I am here. I came tonight simply if there are questions. Can you hear us? Can you hear me? Charles Ott. Can you hear me? You're going to have to unmute.
I'm here, sir.
I'm unmuted.
This is 4.2. Counsel Robinson and Gitchia request City Manager Robert- Your TV is on. Whether you're watching it on, you gotta mute that. ...to assist with them, assist- Give it a try, sir. Go ahead. Mr. Ott, now you're muted, not the screen you're watching the meeting on. It's just you. Yes, I got it.
Amen. Good evening and thank you for your patience with that ordeal.
Mr. Ott, now you're muted, not the screen you're watching the meeting on. It's just you.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, yep.
Yes, we hear you. Just shut off your TV.
I did that.
Great. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, I got it.
Amen. Good evening and thank you for your patience with that ordeal.
Mr. Ott, now you're muted, not the screen you're watching the meeting on. It's just you.
There are two screens here. Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, yep.
Yes, we hear you.
Can you see me? This guy, did he give you a phone number?
Now am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry for all that difficulty. I am here simply if there are questions tonight from, that you would like to discuss with Elliott. I'm here to represent the church and offer my availability if there's any discussion that you would like information about this topic.
Thank you. Counsel Gitchia? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. The spirit of this motion, it was basically out of, I'd like to say first and foremost, I think we all commend and appreciate and respect and value the work that those at the Elliott Church do. I think providing in excess, as they've explained to us, in a two-year period, going from 30 to in excess of 190 meals a day for those that need it, as well as a day center facility. I think it's something that the community desperately needs. I think expecting these people that just took a 25% pay reduction to keep their doors open, to spend half of their time when they should be inside running this day program and serving meals, to be outside cleaning the exterior of the facility, it's a challenge that we can see they're struggling with. And so I think the spirit of this motion comes from establishing a conversation and communication between the city administration and those in charge, decision-making with the Elliott Church and say, would some kind of ornamental fence or something along those lines assist your efforts for maintaining the property and keeping it cleanly? When the gentleman was at the podium, he explained that, you know, they do everything they can to maintain this property, but some of the challenges are the unruliness that they're faced with. And I don't think that's their responsibility either, to be getting in confrontation with those that they're trying to help. So I think this motion was just born out of extending some kind of assistance to an organization that's struggling to maintain the property and allowing them more free time to do what they've been doing best and serve in the community. And that's the take I'd get. I'll pass it to Counselor Gitchia, please. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. You know, when you read in a newspaper about $300 fines a day, which was never true, someone got fined $300 once and if through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Assistant City Manager, Rashado, were they fined 300 a day or were they fined $300 once after months and months of communication?
Rashado?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. They were fined one time, $300.
Can you say that again so that people can understand? One time, not?
It was a one-time violation for $300.
Thank you. So that's been clarified. Hopefully, we get a rebuttal in an area that it was written in. At the end of the day, when you see this happening, and we had a speaker up here say that they couldn't maintain the property, they couldn't maintain things, the object was to try to help. So how could we help? We put a motion forward saying, okay, we may have some opera money left over. We have a contract with the fence company. Why could we not, you know, maybe grant monies to be able to support keeping people away, which would actually keep the area cleanly or keep people off it? It would be controlled by the people. I did reach out to the church. I left a message on the phone last Wednesday after people said we didn't reach out, but we did. We tried. It was more of a good faith thing to say, okay, how do we keep the property a little bit clean? And the question was just ask the manager to reach out and see if there was a way that we could find some funding to help them out, because already we've found funding, I believe, in the tune of a $30,000 during the first opera that got given to the church because there was need. And then in the second one, I believe there was a $33,000 one that I saw that went on, and there's probably more that I missed. But it's $63,000. If you find me $300 and I get $63,000, please find me again and give me the other 63. All we're asking for is a partnership, and if we have to help by putting a fence up and helping that way, then we certainly can. But we have to make sure that people are not doing the things they're doing over there and keep the area clean. We spent, I believe, we all received something from the manager that said, we spend over 40 hours a week over in that area cleaning. I mean, that's ridiculous. If it costs us 20 grand to put up a fence, we're going to save in the first two weeks of not having to bring our resources over there. So, I mean, these things just make sense, and I don't know why government takes so long to follow along with common sense practices. So I think that, you know, it is private property, but I think under the opera funding, maybe there's a grant piece or something that could go there and share that funding to help. And we were just, the premise to the whole thing was to try to help and try to find a solution. So for those who are negative about it, thinking the city did this and that, well, we have other businesses around there that are being affected by the unkept area. Thank you.
Counsel Mercier?
What I'm about to say, and I know Charlie Ott is probably listening, and he's probably going to be upset by what I say, but I'm going to say it anyway. I really firmly believe what I'm going to say, and I would think and compare it to your household. And when you have small children, you train them. There's a nice meal on the table, put your plates where they belong. And I know that the Elliott Church is doing everything they can with the help of St. Paul's Kitchen that comes in, and they feed people in need. There's no reason nor excuse for people that are getting something free to go outside and throw their trash all over. I would firmly say, we're thrilled to be able to feed you, but if we're not going to be able to have you clean up after yourself, then we're going to probably have to discontinue this program. Maybe then they will take a little pride in trying to clean up the area instead of throwing it around. I mean, I should, I don't know how you give, have people become accountable, accountability. You're getting something free, be grateful enough to clean up after yourself. There's barrels there, there's trash cans, and yet they throw it on the street. There's no need of that. And if I were to give Mr. Ott some guidance, I would say to them just what I just said. And that's what I believe. We got to train people. We're giving you something free. Show your gratitude. We don't want your money. We know you don't have it. Try to clean up after yourself. Is that so hard to ask? We have the city workers, they do their job, they do a yeoman's job, cleaning the common every Friday. To have the Elliott Church be kind enough to give them food that they discard the containers and, I don't know. That's my opinion. I'm sorry if you're offended, but that's how I feel.
Counsel Belenja?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. No, I do appreciate the motion, but I did take a ride by there during the height of all this, these emails and when these fines were in progress, and it was a mess. I don't know how else I can explain it. And I'm glad Counselor Gitchia clarified the $300 was in total, which according to my information was more or less a settlement. It could have easily been $300 a day for multiple days. So do we want to hurt a nonprofit like that that's doing a good deed? Certainly not. But nonetheless, Counsel Mercy had encouraged and makes some great points that, you know, you cook, when you cook, you have to clean. When you're serving the public, these are disposable cutlery they're using, and many of them are taking them outside and just tossing it right out the door, eating wherever they like, taking it across the street at the park and just leaving it wherever they may be. So I'm not so sure what a fence around the perimeter does to combat that. This activity is going on during the day when meals are served. So it's up to the individual, as Counsel Mercy has stated. They need to do better. And, you know, I don't mean to put it on the workers, the volunteers at the Elliott Church. Again, it's greatly appreciated. But, you know, I saw it with my own two eyes. It was a mess, and it needs to get better. Now, what can we do to help? We'll see what we can do. But, you know, we're hoping to see some improvement there. It's much needed. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes 4.2.
Mr. Mayor, could I please make a motion to suspend the rules? Just allow one of our guests to speak on this, please.
Motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Gitchia, suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening. I wasn't prepared to speak. My name is Carol Kerstad. I'm a longtime resident in the city of Lowell, born and raised here. I still live here. I grew up in the Elliott Church. And what I'd like to say is the issues facing the city regarding the homeless community, there are no silver bullets. In response to Counsel Mercy's comments, it's not just that people won't clean up after themselves. They're like children. There are mental health issues. There are drug addiction issues. The Elliott is committed to helping people, and I would just encourage the city to partner with the Elliott. I too am sad because we have lost so much at the Elliott that we hold near and dear, but I also know the commitment of the community to serve those in need, and it's a mission of the church, and they're doing more than many organizations in the city. So I would just encourage people to come together, to create solutions rather than to assume anything that this problem is an easy fix. Thank you. And I have a colleague here, Joyce Hughes, who's the Director of the Day Program at Elliott. Do you want to say anything, Joyce?
I'm a resident of Chelmsford, so I don't know if I'm even allowed to-
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And a recent executive director. So I've been a member of the church all my life, but this day center program was to my peripheral vision. But I've been in there the past couple of months, and it's not just that the homeless are children that we need to pat on the hand and say, no, 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 don't drop your trash. They do have issues, and we try to address the issues with client services, but also we're not there overnight. The day center program is from 10 to 2. St. Paul's Soup Kitchen is feeding them from 4:30 to about 6:00. But from 6:00 PM till we get there about 9 o'clock the next morning, the homeless just arrive, and they're bringing all their stuff with them. Maybe they're, you know, having parties on our lawn. We don't know because frankly, we don't go to Elliott after dark. But a fence would help, and I would like to speak to the council. If this passes, we'd be more than welcome for help because we seem to be the only game in town as a day center. And as Carol said, there are no easy fixes, but we would like to at least help Lowell. Thank you.
Okay. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, just to speak with the church and see what we can do to help out. You know, there are other organizations that do the exact same thing, that have received, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and don't deal with this issue. So I'm not sure rewarding bad behavior is necessarily the right way to go. But all in favor, say, Counsel Scott?
That's right. You just said what I was going to say anyways. I just, I was going to ask LTLC, the other Salvation Army, I mean, do they have systems in place like that maybe they can replicate or that you can kind of find out how they're maintaining their properties in a better way?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you're going to sit down with the Health Director and Homeless Coordinator to try to figure something out and get a report back to us. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Counsel Decaro, you got anything to say?
Actually, Counsel Scott just asked it. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes 4.3. Counsel Robinson requests City Manager provide an update, complete with timeline and the current status of a 3-1-1 implementation. Second by Counsel Noon. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I hate to harp on this. This has been three years of requests. We've had Mr. Fernandez at the podium a few times. We had a cyber attack, which we recovered from. We've provided funding in the budget or other mechanisms to bring on additional supports to help him get this stood up and still crickets on 3-1-1. I think, you know, I'm trying to be patient here, and I appreciate if you can kind of nudge this along, and I've said it right along, if we have to bring in an outside vendor to stand this up for us and train our employees, so be it. But, I mean, three years is a little bit long, and the excuse of the cyber attack, okay, that was a real event. But here we are, how many months after, and still nothing. So I'm hoping that we can get this going.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I'll give a mini-update if I could. It's good news.
Please.
So we're looking within the coming weeks to do a beta test with the council. So it is up and running. We finally hired our last person. She just started with us Monday. So we are moving. It has taken some time, but the beta test, what we would like to do is have the council to do it, because quite frankly, all the folks are going to call you and say, how do we use this? So my hope is that, and it's not a hope, it's, it better happen, in the next, within the next two weeks, that the councils will have an opportunity to view it, look at it, take it for a spin, see what your thoughts are, and then we'll make any changes that we need to. My hope would be February 1, full tilt. We've already been talking with our communications department about how this is going to be rolled out, and you are correct, it's taken some time. It's taken too long, but the beta test, which is just a practice, if you would, let's try to work out some of the bugs. I figured who better to work out any potential bugs, Counsel, than the folks that are sitting here in front of us. So beta test within weeks.
Greatly appreciated.
Not before the end, not after the, it's not going into 2025.
That's music to my ears, and I'd also like to encourage maybe consideration for some of our department heads, CNDPW and along those lines, also to beta test it, because again, if some of this stuff is going to be coming in from the public and it's going to be public-facing, it's kind of a good time to get them familiar with it. to be public-facing, it's kind of a good time to get them familiar with it, because they're going to have to be able to explain to their employees exactly how this all works.
So under the beta, it'll be a limited, just a limited scope, and we want to make sure that it actually is going to work. And, you know, once again, within thereafter, we'll load in, for instance, you know, potholes won't be there under beta, just for edification of the members. It'll be a couple of things that we can just try to make sure it is working, working appropriately, working from home, working from the road, and I hope you guys didn't mind, but I figured you folks would be the best to kind of try this thing out, to make sure it works.
Greatly appreciated, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Four point four, Councilor Scott, request city manager have the appropriate department require quarterly inspections of the condition of all flags at our parks and municipal buildings. Seconded by Councilor Janess, Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually a little embarrassed to have to make this motion, it really shouldn't be necessary. And it's not a one-time thing, this has happened quite a few times before I decided to make this motion. One time, I wouldn't bother, but, and they're not just flags that are just sprayed or starting to fray or tattered, I mean, these are just completely destroyed, they're really, they're disrespectful. So it is, to me, it's a middle management issue, whether or not the, I don't even know who's responsible, I don't want to say the parks and police, because I don't want to assume, because I know some of them, they need the tree truck, I guess, to go get them down. But it needs to be a standard that's expected, it needs to be relayed to all of their employees. The middle manager needs to put a calendar reminder in his phone, get in the car and drive around, I guess, and look to see that they're done, because I really just don't want to see photos sent to me anymore in the condition that they were sent. Thank you.
Councilor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I agree with Councilor Scott. It's sad that it's come to this point, we have to do this, and, you know, people cut the lawn, they rake the leaves, they do all these things. Mr. Manager, don't take it personal on any of this stuff, because it kind of is sad that somebody who's on a machine can't look up in the air and see something that is torn and everything, that's all. And I agree with Councilor Scott, and the Assistant City Manager, Rashado, knows we've all had sent over pictures of them and said, hey, can we fix this flag or something? So hopefully, this can change quick. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Five point four, sorry, four point five, Councilor Dakota, request city manager have the transportation engineer update the council on the progress of signalization of bus lanes and the Lord Overpass. Seconded by Councilor Chow, Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping Ms. Altman would be here for some questions, but she can get back to me, I guess. I guess, other than phone calls for potholes, this is coming up second now on my list. I am getting inundated with calls concerning the Lord Overpass. You could read the Lowell Sun by the time you hit a red light to a green light to get from Chemsus Street down to Dutton Street.
It's only three pages now, anyway.
I'm a slow reader, I'm a slow reader, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. But I did actually have a visit with the LRTA administration, and of the twenty buses that they have, only five are utilizing the Lord Overpass. First and foremost, I made this request, I believe, in April to Ms. Altman, that we're going to look into it because of Verizon and we're having problems, and that's it. But after thinking about that, that would necessitate another signal, because if you were coming from the Kennedy Center and coming up to the bus lane, and you wanted to take a right onto Appleton Street, you couldn't, because there's two other lanes on the right-hand side of that that have the same signal. And vice versa, if you were coming from, for the people who are at five o'clock in the afternoon or at Dutton at Broadway, because it's so backed up, that it takes almost three cycles to get to the top of the overpass, everybody's either going straight, you're trying to get in the right lane to either go to Middlesex, or you're getting in that right lane to go into Chemsus Street, which is kind of dangerous right there. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I have been in transportation for quite a few years, I'm not sure if there's a need for a bus lane. The only people that use the bus lane right now are the police and the fire, that's it, and EMS, I believe.
In the funeral home, when they have a funeral.
I press the button. But I'm not sure. I really think the backup is, is to get rid of the bus lane, look at this, relook at this again from a design point, and maybe that bus lane is, if you're coming from Dutton, the Thondite Street should be your bus lane, you're going up to the ramp should be your Middlesex and your Chemsus Street right. And that would actually shorten up the signals, and people wouldn't have to be in, I mean, people are in traffic for close to six, seven, eight minutes, waiting for a light to change. So I would really like to have Ms. Altman take a, relook at this, and I'm not pointing this on her, this was before her, her predecessor helped with this, but it probably would have been nice if the prior traffic engineer spoke with the LRTA, because they're not accessing it all. So I would appreciate a report from Ms. Altman, the city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Moving on, section five, five point one, motion responses. A, reservoir tree removal, Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I saw the presentation, I've been looking at the information, I think a lot of the residents are familiar with the information that was presented to the board. I just hope, I know that it won't begin until spring, if possible, if we could get maybe another presentation back at the Centerville Neighborhood Group meeting before the work commences, I think that'd be greatly appreciated. I thank you for putting in the vendor that's coming in to do the work. They put together a pretty sound mapping that's pretty easy to read, and just, you know, some more clarification and conversation before they start the work in the spring would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilor Bresia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this report, they're talking about greening the gateway cities, and they're doing a great job along the boulevard, Pettigard Boulevard, where the Belleguard Bath House is, the trees run all the way down, you can see the little planting of the trees, beautiful, I can't wait till they get older and bloom, it's going to be beautiful. And then if you go further down, you see across the street, they're on both sides of the street. So I'm very pleased, it's going to be a beautiful sight when they start growing up and looking beautiful. Thank you.
Motion response, B, Lucy Lockham, Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the administration for the response, and I'm glad to know that there is work going on on these benches. Some of them were in pretty rough shape, which is why I made the motion. So I look forward to seeing what we can do and what they look like in the spring. I would like to see us become more proactive on the benches. I feel like we've kind of gone in fits and starts with these, we'll replace a bunch of them, and then they are okay for a while, and then all of a sudden, we get to a point where they're not okay. And that's happened, you know, several times in my time living downtown. So if we can figure out a way to get ahead of that, and obviously, that requires funding and being able to adequately, you know, handle it, but I think that would be ideal from a resident point of view, from a visitor point of view, and I think it'd just make the city look better if we can stay on top of those benches. So, thank you, I know you're working on it, and I appreciate it.
Motion to accept or place on file by Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Getche, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Six, votes to the city manager, we have one this evening, six point one, vote to authorize the city manager request approval to change acre urban revitalization and development plan, we have the full reading and a second reading by title. I vote to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to request approval for the following plan change to the acre urban revitalization and development plan for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. We need a motion to adopt by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Dakota. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Ruck.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem, Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getche.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Ten years.
Section seven, we have two subcommittee reports, seven point one, housing, Council Yem asks to push out to next week, him not being here this evening. Seven point two, nonprofit organization this evening, next week, Councilor Getche. Seven point three, wire inspection, Boston Gas National Grid, is a request to upgrade of existing gas main along Barrowsford Avenue. Motion to adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Belanger, seconded by Councilor Mercier. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Section eight, petitions, eight point one, one property claim. Motion to refer to law department for a port recommendation by Council Janess, seconded by Council Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Eight point two, miscellaneous, Daniel Kimmel, requests to address the city council regarding safety issue at the corner of Fourth Ave. and Mammoth Road. Need a motion to refer to the transportation engineer for a port recommendation by Council Scott, seconded by Council Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Section nine, announcements. Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give everyone a heads up that the professional women's hockey team is back in Lowell, and their home opener is tomorrow night. The team came so close to winning the inaugural championship last year, losing in game five at the Songas Center, and the team they lost to is back, so it's a bit of a revenge opportunity for the opening game. Last year, we saw almost sixty thousand people come to games at the Songas Center for the team, so it had a great positive impact on the economic development in the downtown. The restaurants and other businesses did well by having that many people come into town. It's a very different crowd than just, it comes to like the UML hockey games, for instance, it's a more regional, you get folks from further afield than you do for the UML games typically. There are members of seven different countries' national teams on the fleet this year, so there's a lot of talent, and every night, you're seeing the best women's hockey players in the world. There's only three cities in all of the United States where these games happen, and Lowell is extremely fortunate to be one of them. So if you have an opportunity to get out and support the team, come on down, you'll find me there for sure, except for the Tuesday night games. And, yeah, it's, you know, good luck to the team, and hopefully, we'll be able to have them in to wish them good luck in person after the new year. Thank you.
Council Bresia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Saturday, December seventh, from six A.M. to two P.M. is the WCAP Radio-Thon for the Salvation Army. I will be ringing the bell at the Owl Diner with my daughter. If you could please stop by and make a donation for those to help out those in need, we would all appreciate it. This is a very crucial time of the year where people are asking for help and would like to provide them with some stuff, with mail and whatever the Salvation Army does, they do such a great job. It's a push to help, so if anybody wants to come on down, they appreciate anything that the Salvation Army can get. Thank you so much.
Council Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. On Friday night at the Blue Shamrock, one oh five Market Street, from five-thirty to eight P.M., Senator Steve Pangiatakis and the Lowell Sun Santa Fund is holding a toy drive, so bring an unwrapped toy and/or a check for the Sun Santa Fund. So that's Friday night at the Blue Shamrock.
I second that announcement.
Very nice, thank you, Council Noon. Council Robinson.
Thank you. And there's also a Sun Santa fundraiser going on this Sunday, December eighth, at the Dom Polsky, Ten Coben Street, and that's from one to five P.M. And I believe it's a five-dollar entry fee, and all proceeds go to the Sun Santa, and they've been doing this every year. So bring the family down, bring kids down, and come out and help. Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Ochius.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So next Thursday is the Second Annual Culinary Celebration at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. It's open to the public, it's free, there are twenty different restaurants this year. We've also added a dessert hour, so the event begins at four-thirty, doors open. We have Booty Vortex back by popular demand, and it should be really fun.
Awesome, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Robinson, good night.